Thank you.
By the way, thank you. Good evening and welcome to the Thursday, November thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, City Planning Board meeting. We house here in the Select Board hearing room at Town Hall. Uh, we know it's a hybrid meeting, but we're never gonna go over this stuff. Ian, uh, we have a post of your genders there, so.
Second.
I'm in favor.
Aye.
What if we noted that we had down one member tonight, uh, who's a little system work elsewhere? So, six thirty, continue public hearing, a major site plan administrative review in the village center and neighborhood district in Ring Bush, Ripway, Gateway District, Ring Bush Village Center District, blah, 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 eighteen and twenty countryway, immediate continuance is requested, referred by the paperwork.
I move to accept the applicant's request to continue the public hearing for major site plan administrative review and stormwater permit for multi-family building in the village center and neighborhood districts, Ring Bush, Ripway, Gateway District, Ring Bush Village Center Subdistrict, VCN, GDUG, GBC, for eighteen to twenty countryway until December eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, at six thirty P M. And to continue the time for action filing with the town perm until February twenty-seventh of twenty twenty-six.
You're second.
Second.
I'm in favor. Okay, we'll see him. Um, six forty-five.
It's a public hearing when you ask.
Oh, yes, right, okay.
Remember, we did this because we thought we were getting the school in and then they decided after our, after listening to our talk, we wanted that, we were making.
You gotta win, Mr. Pritchett.
Unreasonable demands, unreasonable demands. And, um, so it was gonna be too expensive, so they decided they weren't gonna store it. I don't know, of course, it's cool.
Where are they storing it?
Where is it?
Where are they storing it?
I know they came out, uh, followed the street and take a left.
Yeah.
Maybe they go from there, I think.
I don't know, I see the lenders trucks going off for no while, so.
I do too. I see them all up.
So, I don't know.
I wanted to, um.
No, I mean, in ten minutes, I think that we should, uh, get a dollar step of a very well esteemed member of, uh, Wooding's best way, good wood, but best way last week.
Or did he?
Yes.
Sure. Um, yeah, but I don't know.
Sorry.
Uh, yep.
Oh, God.
Uh, he was, he was really one of the good guys, I have to say, and he did a really lot with this town. Didn't have a lot to say, but boy, when he said it, you better pay attention. Uh, Ian will be a celebratory life sometime in January that will be posted. But Ian, could you say if he works at T U Bill for a really long time?
I've known Mr. Van Mark or Wildville. And that goes back to advisory board. I served on the advisory board with him and then I came on the planning board and I encouraged Tim to run for planning and he served on his board for about, at least twenty-five years. And he was chairman for a lot of that time.
I got a card from City of Planning, you know, so I've had some past planning people sign.
Oh, good.
Uh, yeah, so if you would like to sign, you know, writing an amendment or do you mind?
I will.
He really knew everything about everything. And it was, as Patty said, a man of few words, but when he spoke, boom.
Yes, right to the point.
Right to the point.
He didn't have to, there was no like, what did he need to say?
No, no, he knew exactly what to say.
But Ian, he passed through home, this way.
Yes, he did, and I've known that family for forty years, one time.
Like I said, one of the really true good guys, Ian, I'm sorry.
He'd be truly missed.
Truly missed, I will miss him forever, that is for sure. A really nice guy.
So. Do you want me to do the modification request?
Uh-huh.
Seven forty-five, you've got the ten minutes for me to read.
We could do, well, I mean, we could do minutes and accounting, you know, uh, we could do those.
He didn't get it, voila.
Yeah, it is.
Minutes. I move the, uh, planning minutes of October twenty-third, twenty twenty-five.
You're second.
Second.
I'm in favor.
Aye.
And I'm sure we spent some money.
We'll see.
Okay.
Never know. All right. We've got a few things to note on our list.
Okay.
All right, we have, um.
It's fine.
You have a read. I have a read. Look at you. Okay, um, let's see. Five thousand sixty-one dollars and eighteen cents returned to S T W one, one built homes.
Stormwater permit, lot, um, lot number seven, lot four, Laurel Wood Drive.
Okay, thank you.
Well, it doesn't say that here, but doesn't.
That's fine, okay.
All right, you got that. And then we have nineteen hundred dollars, merit engineers, S T W P R, Laurel Wood Drive again. And we have hundred ten dollars and fifty-three cents for office supplies, W Mason. And we have four thousand. Six hundred eighty dollars for seaside toll worth construction observations for Lee Whitten. Well, they did a walkthrough, right?
No, they did the top coat.
They were on.
They were serving for the top coat.
Okay.
Yep, three days, took them three days to put the top coat in.
Are those teeth still there?
Yes, it'd be better, but never again.
They're not gonna do the teeth again, we're not gonna accept teeth again.
Never. Okay, and then, uh, one hundred sixty-nine dollars and forty cents, seaside and situated behorths, Lee Whitten, Mywood, P first one.
You got it. I'm in favor.
Aye.
So, I can hear him. Sorry. Um, well, we'll be for the zoning update afterwards.
Yeah.
So, I can tell you where we need to call before, um, two to my word, I think also the Select Board and I did file a complaint against the sort of border appeals. I don't know, we haven't watched any of them yet.
No.
Not anybody who watched, uh, and everybody in this building is well aware that that happened. Um, so, um, I watched those, but, uh, Laura, you were officially on for zoning.
Yeah.
And, um, you need to read their, read your gender and watch the family closely. Please.
Well, thank you.
Ian, you doing anything else?
Yes, I do. I liaise on and sign. Okay, I did C P C the other night and we, um, we voted, we did the basketball courts, they have to be rehabbed. And then recreation came in with this this plan to put a fitness thing up at Gates in front of the old Gate School.
Oh, what?
Fitness. And the problem with this fitness thing is, it's private, it is not public. And one of the things, it, it would be snap dab.
And they want C P C money for a private project.
Okay. It's four hundred and some odd thousand dollars. And I typed up at one point and said, we have spent so much time and so much money trying to maintain oval space.
Yeah.
And to have this green space in front of the Gate School, regardless of what's gonna happen, the facade, I think, is gonna try and stay, but the back of it will be the housing. And you're not gonna lose here, no way.
And I don't know how they could possibly ask us public money for a private.
Well, that finally came out. And so, that's on hold, they have no. So, that was that, and who knows, do, the fitness court is on hold. And next time, we're gonna talk about the, um, the Cranberry Bar. We have a praise and it came in at just over nine hundred thousand.
Need to find out what kind of a Cranberry Bar edition?
We're working on it.
Okay. You need to know that, right? Uh, what would you want me to say?
We're gonna, we're gonna do.
Yeah, you see, yeah. Good difference, it's not land bar or wetland bar. That's it, I told you, we need to go.
Aye.
Yeah. And so, that's, that was the beginning and the end of my liaison. And you're gonna go.
What else have I given that water tells before we, and you take a rest about short and sweet meetings?
Well, I can probably do the planning development report right now. Um, you know, I want to say same whole crap different day. Same whole crap, different day. Next time, you'll have a modification for an A T U that you just approved.
Why?
Um.
The door.
No, they want to add more square footage. So, if it improved at one square footage, they wanna add another. So, Patty and I decided it was coming in as a modification.
Okay, and where is, which one is still?
So, that's your road.
Oh.
So, that's your road. You'll also have a modification next time for nineteen four.
Oh, my God.
The condition that requires the fire department with the town planner and building commissioner to, to do, to run the fire apparatus through the courtyard.
Mm-hmm.
Fire department's not going to do.
Wow.
They're not putting their million dollar truck there.
Well, hopefully, there's got a fighter again for you, you're gonna be going to there.
They just decided this down.
Yeah.
That's nice.
They're already signed over.
So, I asked the fire department today for a letter. They, they're convinced that the materials were what they asked for, so therefore, it's fine. So, I, I'm putting it on your agenda next week, so you guys can talk about it.
You know.
The first closing is November twenty-third.
The first close.
Yes. I don't have to ask them yet.
So, I'm, I'm sorry, this is the fire department, they have done.
They, they, they say they've signed off on this because it's the materials are what they, they asked for.
Uh-huh. So, is there anything to do?
They don't see if the truck completed enough, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, they're not putting a million dollar truck in there, is what he told me.
They don't want to see if it goes in, if it comes back out.
Well, they're gonna test it.
When it goes up.
When it happens.
Um, so I was told that they said they're gonna fight a fire from the roof.
Okay, good.
Okay, fine, let them.
So, that's gonna be on for modification for next week.
All right.
Okay, um, you'll get, you'll have an immediate continuance next week for twenty-one Central, seven Marshfield. Um. Yeah. It is what it is.
We just keep slugging over.
We keep slugging over.
We just didn't have this.
Well, I, I can't, not right now.
No.
Not right now, but I mean, um, they're, they're, they're struggling to try to figure out how, how they can meet the new stormwater regulations.
They can't.
And so, the attorney thought that they didn't have to meet because they already filed. And I said, no, 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 you're not like ninety-nine percent done like Mr. McGill was. So, I'm not making him go, go with the new stormwater regulations. If you, if you're, if you're at the beginning of a project, you're gonna comply with us.
Yeah.
But somebody who's ninety-nine percent done, i- it, it's not fair to.
You know.
Stay well.
So, I think it's.
It's time.
So, six forty-five, can we do our continued public hearing? For me, just like whether you was stormwater permit, seven ninety-nine, eight oh one countryway, could you?
Lou.
Keep going.
You good. How are you?
I'm here. Yeah.
That's what happens.
And try to play those give you.
Stop, please. Who can, um, have it delivered? All right, hold on.
Do you have any need to say what happens, happened since the last meeting?
Yeah, what happened?
So, we've, um, we're sorry, so we've made some back and forth with, um, uh, the town engineer, third-party engineer, Cecilia. Um, Grady's gone back and forth, made the recommended changes, I think have submitted the updated plans, so. Yes, that's where we are. So, I'm hoping.
Do I understand, do I understand the My Law just came in yesterday?
No, that's for, the My Laws came in for eight oh three, that was already approved, it's got two appeals period. So, the My Laws, uh, we just dropped off the My Laws for.
I didn't know the My Laws.
Oh.
I don't think it's happening.
Wait, hang on, did you bring the My Laws for? Oh, they went to the end, oh, I was talking about for eight oh three.
I don't have the My Laws, but you know.
No, 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 I'm sorry, I, you had said you weren't signing them tonight, so.
Right, well, it's on for endorsement for next week.
Yeah, it's gonna drop off tomorrow, tomorrow morning.
Okay, all right.
No problem.
All right.
So.
You will do that.
Um.
So, John has reviewed the revised plans and John believes the Dray will work as condition. Okay?
Yep.
Um, and so that basically you're going to have to do seven ninety-nine and eight oh one, and then do a modification for eight oh three because things on that side change. Do you wanna say anything about?
Well, yeah, can you just wait to begin with this one first?
No, you have.
It's all part of the same.
It's all, it's all the same thing.
All right.
Because Dray has to work for both of them.
Okay, Mr. Pritchett, what do you want to know us?
Yeah, I mean, basically, um, we've gone back and forth a few times on this, obviously, and, uh, at this point, you know, they've pretty much addressed everything. I had one condition that I recommended. One of the systems, uh, hundred year flood is equal to the catch basin rim, so, but it's a big deal. Put a couple of squad graves to add a little bit of cushion there, um, so that the catch base, you know, there's a little bit of a dip for the catch base, a little bit of a hump of the basin. Nobody's gonna see it as you're talking, you know, these couple inches. I, so you can.
They can deal with that.
If you don't find that to be an issue, the ones.
No issue.
That was the only condition other than, you know, what, I did read two of the, the draft, and that was the only one that I had.
So, what about that reflecton situation, okay?
I've spent a lot of it before.
Well, what if everybody, yeah?
Not from him, not from this side.
Once they took the dam down, that was.
Yeah, it's done. Swear to God, that's it, okay? You submit anything you wanna tell us?
Um, no. Minor changes. Forwarding the drainage of the site plan.
I reckon on the record that I still believe this project is true to the side piece. Had that on the record, I still think it's a literal debate on the side. But, we get it as it may, we'll see what happens. Okay? Mr. Pritchett, what did you say?
And we are going to have a sidewalk, yes?
Yes. In front of, and I spoke to our neighbor who was doing the, the home next door.
Yeah.
So, she was very happy that we're putting the sidewalk and then committing her in front of the neighbor next door to us and bringing it to the crosswalk.
Yes. So, as soon as the plans are approved, I need a CAD file of the plans because the town will be contracting to have the design done of the sidewalk in front of seven ninety-three. Mr. McGill's gonna build it, but the town is going to contract, we have somebody who we've signed a contract with, you know, and they will do the design, et cetera.
Can I ask a really stupid question, how much is to design a sidewalk?
Not very.
Okay, just.
It's not that expensive, it's only about seven thousand dollars.
Oh, please, you know, I won't say it.
And I'm taking the money out of, out of some money that was transferred. Uh, I'm taking the Laurel Wood.
No, Laurel.
That, that, we never built the side, they never built the path through the woods there. So, that money got moved into, um, our sidewalk fund with their permission. And so, that could, that didn't have to be used in Greenwich, that could be used anywhere in town, uh, where it's using now.
Do you think that there's any possibility that five million dollar property at, what is that, eight seventeen or eight nineteen countryway?
Oh, the other one.
The other one. Ever put a sidewalk across from that?
Depends if they have to do any modifications to the construction.
I don't think so. You're saying five million?
No, but.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's been on the market a long time.
And it will continue to be on the market for a long time.
Okay, yeah, so this is very low, so Ian, we'll have your.
I'll just keep going till I can't stand it, so we'll have a minute.
Laurel will pick it up.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, are you ready?
I am, yeah, I'm ready. Well, the major site plan review with stormwater permit, the village center, neighborhood district, seven ninety-nine, eight oh one countryway, correct?
Okay.
Yeah.
Eleven twelve twenty-five, but today's the thirteenth.
Close enough.
Close enough. I move to make the following findings of fact. One, on March twentieth, twenty twenty-five, the applicant, Don McGill, an owner, option C properties LLC, filed an application for major site plan review and stormwater permit for multi-family building project in the village center and neighborhood district under City of Zone bylaws, section five eighty, seven fifty, seven sixty, seven seventy, and nine forty. The application included, but is not limited to the following. A cover letter, D, application forms including attachment A to F, B, final fees, and a butters list, C, site plan number seven ninety-nine and eight oh three countryways to mass dated March nineteenth, twenty twenty-five by Grady Consulting LLC consisting of seventeen sheets. D, do I need to read all of those?
You could just say architectural plans.
Um, architectural plans for the five units as printed in the.
I think you should judgment by what you need to read.
Thank you.
Don't need to read to the short one.
I mean, this is, this is ultimate, so.
You can say it's seven ninety-nine.
I, I did, all right, architectural, architectural plans, five units, residence seven ninety-nine, eight oh three countryway. E, stormwater management, design calculations for seven ninety-nine, eight oh three countryway dated March fifth, twenty twenty-five by Grady Consulting LLC. F, notification on April eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, the new owner of the property is New Nathan Street Realty Trust, Twenty Main Street Act in Mass, oh one seven two oh. Two. The property that is the subject of the application is composed of one parcel. The parcel is lot twelve dash two dash thirty-four and thirty-five, and it is thirty-two thousand sixty square feet, all of which is upland. The parcel has structured on and access off countryway, a public way. The property is currently included with an existing dwelling and two sheds. Three, the project is located in the village center and neighborhood district V C N zoning district, North City Village, N S V, Outer Village, Subdistrict, O V, V C N, N S V, O V. For the zoning bylaw in effect for this project is the bylaw approved by the City and Motown Meeting on four eighth, twenty twenty-four, and by the Attorney General on seven ten of twenty twenty-four, and posted to the website in July of twenty twenty-four. Five, the project proposed by the applicant consists of ten residential units in two multi-family buildings of five units each comprising of building one and two. The multi-family buildings will cover a total of twenty bedrooms. There will be one affordable unit, which is ten percent of the total number of units. Six, the two M F Vs are three stories with roof deck and are thirty-nine feet nine inches from the average grade to the roof midpoint. The M F Vs are three stories in the rear and twenty-four point eight inches to the roof midpoint. The overall height is thirty-nine feet nine inches from the average grade, which is less than the maximum height of forty feet as defined in the City of Zone by law. Seven, there are thirteen total paid exterior parking spaces provided in front of garages and to the rear of the site. There are two crushed stone parking spaces to the rear of the site. There are provisions in each unit for electric vehicles. The planning board has determined that there is no tandem parking at the site. Parking is governed by section seven sixty point eight of the City of Zone by law. The parking in mixed-use districts, table two, and requires one space for a one-bedroom unit, one point five spaces for a two-bedroom unit, and two spaces for a three-bedroom unit in a multi-family or mixed-use building as the site is in the V C N district. A, section seven sixty point seven does not apply because the proposed use is residential in the V C N. Nine, the property at seven ninety-nine and eight oh one countryway does not require a pedestrian frontage overlay zone for section five eighty point two of Zone by law. Ten, in the V C N, N S V, O V, a multi-family building is allowed use, is allowed use by law for section four twenty of Zone by law and an allowed building type per section five eighty point three with the design standards of section seven fifty of the Zone by law. Eleven, the base residential density in V C N, N S V, O V, subdistrict for section five eighty point four of Zone by law, a multi-family building is fifteen units per acre by right and twenty-four units per acre by special permit. The proposed project has eleven units that are allowed by right and up to seventeen units allowed by special permit. Ten units are proposed onsite, which does not require a density bonus, but is allowed by right. Twelve, section five eighty point four also has minimum bulk standards for dwelling sizes. Two plus bedroom units are required in nine hundred square feet of usable floor area. A one-bedroom unit is required to six hundred square feet of usable floor area. The project has proposed ten two-bedroom units in two five-unit and, in two five-unit buildings with usable area of seventeen hundred fifty square feet minimum, which meets the bulk standard. Thirteen, no public ground standards are required for this project because no new streets are being created. Pedestrian crosswalks are required by the ceiling across driveways and are provided. Fourteen, site at seven ninety-nine and eight oh one countryway will have shared access drainage set in some utilities with eight oh three countryway. An easement plan has been provided as well as easement descriptions. As the applicants for seven ninety-nine and eight oh one countryway and eight oh three countryway are the same and there is, is over an increase of twenty-five percent imperious and disturbance is greater than fifteen thousand square feet, thus a stormwater permit is required. Fifteen. One affordable unit among the ten residential units is required for the project. The affordable unit is located in building two, number eight oh one of the pro, of the project. The one affordable unit is a two-bedroom unit. The affordable unit is designed so the exterior is indistinguishable from the market rate units. The applicant has stated that they will be using Metro West Collaborative Development as the monitoring agent of the affordable unit. No other information has been submitted for the affordable unit at this time. The applicant requests a waiver to allow the remaining information to be submitted after the project is approved. The affordable unit must be, must be able to outtool the town's city with subsidized housing inventory and comply with the local initiative program, the seven sixty point C M R fifty-six. Sixteen, the applicant was referred to meet with the Design Review Committee, D R C, and subsequently met with the D R C on several occasions to discuss this project. The D R C recommend, planning board move ahead with the special permit process in a recommendation memorandum to the planning board dated April twenty-one, twenty twenty-five with the recommendations that tandem parking will be, will require review by the planning board and easement plan is required as part of the parking group for the two properties. The D R C recommended, recommendation is contingent on the view of materials, color, and exterior detailing prior to issuance of a building permit. The project proposes cedar impressions or similar siding for the main part of the building, painted trim, logic windows, gray trim, party panels, painted wood and metal post rails, and steam metal roof and composite decking. Cool earth tones will be used throughout the exterior materials to integrate the building into the natural landscape and the neighborhood. Seventeen, an M F V, as is the proposed project, includes lot standards and design standards bound in seven fifty point six, including this is a laundry list of what's included, if they are under seven fifty point six. Eighteen, a multi-family building has general design standards found in section seven fifty, which is listed, and need those standards.
Wait, five, ten, fifteen, five, yeah.
Twenty, this is, wait a minute, you're right.
I have to.
Nineteen, we've ninety. Nineteen, we've ninety, about age, seven, open, nineteen. Development site standards, section seven fifty point eight are met, including a laundry list. Twenty, sustainable site design is required in the VCN district for section seven fifty-one of the Zone bylaws, such that stormwater management shall conform to best management practices as described in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Stormwater Management Handbook. For the project redevelopment ideology is maintained by detaining and then infiltrating stormwater in underground chambers. The project's post-construction stormwater heat rating and volume runoff is not exceeded from the predeveloped quote for the one, two, ten, and one hundred year twenty-four hour rain events using type three twenty-four hour rain drought. Stormwater best management practices are required, and the project meets those best practices through the use of deep-sump flooded catch basins, root downspouts to cultech driveway chambers. The total impermeable area on the site is twenty-one thousand square feet, and the total disturbance is thirty-two thousand sixty square feet out of thirty-two thousand square feet site, or one hundred percent of the site. Eighty-one percent TSS removal has been provided as a weighted TSS removal for both properties having eighty-nine percent TSS removal for thirteen thousand four hundred eighty-two square feet of impermeable area and forty-four percent TSS removal for two thousand five hundred twenty-four square feet of impermeable area. Adequate recharge has been provided. Twenty-one, a landscape plan is required for all submissions except where waived by the planning board, which plan should, to the greatest extent possible, utilize native plants. No plants listed as invasive or prohibited by Massachusetts shall be used and, and existing invasive plants shall be removed. A project landscape plan has been provided, in which some native plantings are proposed. Moreover, the lawn area in the front yard is minimized and fertilizer use is discouraged, and screening of parking area from the front has been provided. This requirement has been met. Twenty-two, front yard shall not include impermeable services, surfaces except for driveway. Walkways are paved outdoor dining area, which shall constitute no more than twenty-five percent of the front yard. There are two driveways, walkways, and a wall in, in the front yard, which the applicant indicates constitutes nine hundred thirty-six square feet of impermeable area over the three thousand six hundred thirty-eight square feet front yard, thirty percent of that. Thus, the impermeable in the front yard is twenty-five point seven percent of waiver that's been requested. Twenty-three, parking design is also, also must improve. Access from parking lots to a public sidewalk into the primary building is stated in section seven sixty point eight F point two. The project has provided a walkway connection from the parking in the rear to a proposed sidewalk in front of the building. The proposed sidewalk will extend along the full length of the frontage as currently proposed, except for the driveway. Twenty-four, section seven sixty, parking. Parking has been provided for the Zone bylaw. Do we need to go through all of the different bits?
I think it's done.
You decide.
I'll decide. Confirmation that this has been met shall be provided prior to endorsement. Twenty-five, Citron Zone bylaw seven seventy point six sets forth the standard of review for approval of proposed site plans that require the proposed developments, which are oversized, that may have significant impact on neighborhoods. MFVs require a site plan review by the planning board. In reviewing applications, the planning board is required to assure, to a degree, consistent with reasonable use of the site for the purposes permitted by the regulations of the district in which the land is located. All of the following, section seven seventy point six, A, site plan approval standard A. The standard has been met. Twenty-six, section seven seventy point six B, site plan approval standard B. Um, the standard has been met. Twenty-seven, section seven seventy point six C, site plan approval standard C. The standard is met. Twenty-eight, section seven seventy point six D, site plan approval standard D. This standard is met. Section, twenty-nine, section seven seventy point six E, site plan approval standard E. Adequacy of surface finding, um.
You should read this one.
Uh, yeah.
Yeah.
Finding, the proposed stormwater management system for the project consists of an underground detention system that leads to an underground infiltration system for the proposed building, parking areas, and driveway. Snow storage area has been provided in the north side of proposed parking lot. The board engaged Chesia Consulting with their policy to evaluate the accuracy and accuracy of Brady Consulting LLC's stormwater report and data, as well as the efficacy of the design. Chesia has submitted detailed written comments to the planning board. In response, please convince the applicant and Brady Consulting provided responses, provides reports for requested and updated the site plans. After further review by Chesia, the applicant is determined to have adequately addressed comments and recommendations, assuming the stormwater management system is built as designed and DPW approves the connection to the public drainage system, subject to conditions. The applicant has submitted a construction phase and post-construction phase stormwater operation and maintenance plan that helps ensure that the project will be managed appropriately for the entire construction period and thereafter during ongoing operations. The applicant has submitted an erosion control plan and has been reviewed by the board's peer review consultant. The board deemed acceptable the condition provided. The applicant has provided a snow storage area will be responsible to remove snow from the property, and dispose of it in accordance with state and local regulations. The site has share, has a shared utility easement of eight oh three Countryway for utilities consisting of, but not limited to, drainage, septic, sewer, water, gas, and electric. The review of the stormwater management system by the planning board's consulting engineer and the approval of the site plan eliminates the requirement for a separate stormwater permit under the Stormwater General Bylaw and its regulations for any work that conforms to the plans. Kevin Brady, P E, has certified that the drainage system will resolve the post-development runoff characteristics, including peak flow, total volume of runoff, and water quality runoff to be met, or to be equal or less than redevelopment runoff characteristics. The standard is met.
All right, thirty, section seven seventy point six F, site plan approval standard F, finding, the standard is met. Thirty-one, section seven seventy point six G, site plan approval standard G. The standard has been met. Thirty-two, section seven seventy point six H, site plan approval standard H. The project complies with this requirement. Thirty-three, section seven seventy point six I, site plan approval standard I. This standard is met. Thirty-four, section seven seventy point six J, site plan approval standard J. This has to do with the bike rack, this standard is met. Based on these findings, the planning board finds the stormwater permit and site plan review in the Village Center and Neighborhood District meets the requirements of the Village Center and Neighborhood District sections five eighty, seven fifty, seven sixty, and seven seventy, all can be conditioned as the project will be in harmony with the general purposes of this bylaw, meets the requirements of Mass. General Laws, Chapter forty A. Section, uh, second for discussion, yes.
Mr. Pritchard.
Uh, I'll be changed.
It's on seconded?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
No, sorry.
No, you skip us.
No, I'm the other part.
Mark?
No.
Nobody's allowed to talk to us. Anybody in the audience? Come on.
Stay in your moment.
Okay. Say good-bye to all the favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Decision. Based on the findings of that, on testimony provided in public hearing, planning board pleased stormwater permit and site plan review in the Village Center and Neighborhood District of seventy-nine and eighty-one, eight oh one Countryway site. With the following conditions. All general requirements, all construction work shall be done in accordance with the plans submitted.
And the Brady Consult.
By Brady Consulting, Consulting LLC, entitled site plans, number seven ninety-nine, number eight oh one, and eight oh three Countryway. Final building elevations must be approved by the town planner prior to issuance of a building permit. Submitted material, copy of the plan and conditions must be kept onsite at all times during construction. Two, but this is a stormwater, and the site plan review requires approval permitting or licensing from any local, state, or federal agency. Such required approval permitting or licensing is deemed a condition for town of Citron's Planning Board. Approval of the site plan review, including but not limited to approval by the Select Board and Department of Public Works in all public rights away, including Countryway. Construction shall meet all applicable federal, state, and local laws, regulations, and some regulatory guidance, including but not limited to those of the Citron TPW by Department Building, Department of Public Health, and Board, as well as the Massachusetts DPP and State Building Code. All necessary permits and approvals must be received prior to construction. Three, construction shall meet all requirements of the Zone bylaw. Four, the applicant shall meet the current applicant and all successors in interest, shall meet the applicant and its successors of interest. The planning board may extend said period for good cause shown upon receipt of written request. If this needs to be continued, a public hearing may be required. Five, the total number of residential dwelling units on the site shall not exceed ten, it will be, um, ten, ten two-bedroom units. One of the ten units will be an affordable unit, which required ten percent. The total number of bedrooms onsite shall not exceed twenty. All units constructed at site shall be under rental or ownership conditions, or ownership currently anticipated. A mix of the two shall not occur. Six, the applicant shall obtain the plan endorsement from the planning board for the site plan review and stormwater permit within ninety days of the expiration of the appeal period, and this decision becomes final. All conditions shall be inscribed on the plans prior to endorsement. Seven, storage of fertilizers and pesticides is not allowed unless they are covered or contained. Eight, no vehicle washing is to occur on the site. Nine, the units in a new building shall be numbered on the outside and/or on a map in building lobby for identification, fire protection, and emergency response purposes. Ten, gates are not allowed at the access driveways now or in the future. Eleven, the crosswalk across the roof entrance shall be ten feet wide and must comply with town standards, ADA standard, and N W T T B standard. Waivers. Twelve, a waiver is requested from section seven fifty-four point four and seven fifty-four point five of the Zone bylaw to allow for the monitoring agent and other affordability requirements for the affordable units to be submitted after approval and prior to application for the first, first occupancy permit. The board grants this waiver. Thirteen, a waiver is requested from section seven fifty point eight D one to have parking located within five feet of the front facade. The board grants this waiver. Fourteen, a waiver is requested from section seven fifty point five point three B to allow the building to zone occupancy BTZO of forty-nine percent, and the requirement is fifty percent minimum. This waiver is requested to allow the design of the buildings to be the same as eight oh three Countryway with a width of forty-eight feet, although the front is one hundred ninety-five feet fifty-three inches. The board grants this waiver. Fifteen, a waiver is requested from section seven fifty-one E, three E, to allow more than twenty-five percent impermeable in the front yard. The site plan proposes twenty-five point seven percent as walkways to the unit facing the street are now shown. The board grants this waiver. Sixteen, a waiver is requested from section seven fifty point six, table one A, and design standing three point four for the street-facing entrance. Only one unit in each building has a street-facing entrance. The other units have entrances that face the looped driveway, appearing to be the main entrances. The board grants this waiver. Seventeen, a waiver is requested from Citron Stormwater bylaw, section eight, eight point three, and Citron Stormwater Regulations, section nine point three. This section of the bylaw requires the site to retain one inch of stormwater runoff of all impermeable surfaces. The applicant has provided one inch of treatment waterfall volume and does retain runoff in full compliance with state stormwater regulations, and maintain it is not feasible to comply fully with one inch compliance specifically along the front portion of the site. They have attempted compliance by achieving a weighted eighty-one percent TSS removal for impermeable areas, and thirteen thousand four hundred eighty-two square feet of impermeable area is eighty-nine percent TSS removal, and two thousand five hundred twenty-four square feet of impermeable area with the site having the deep-sump manhole offline. The board grants this waiver. Utilities, parking, traffic, and street improvements. Eighteen, maintenance and repair of the driveway and parking airboats, stormwater management system, site utilities, snow removal, lighting, and landscaping, shall meet the responsibility of the applicant. Nineteen, all parking is limited to designated spaces as shown on the plan, ten surface parking spaces in front of garages, and then ten parking spaces are provided. The board has determined the spaces shown will not constitute tam, tandem parking. Parking in front of garages cannot have a vehicle exceeding seventeen feet in length, as included in the condominium trust and master D documents. Each unit will be equipped with an electrical vehicle charging paid buildings. All parking is limited to spaces shown on the plan. Five parallel parking spaces are provided in the rear of the buildings for service and guest parking. Three of these spaces are paved and two are crushed stone. Twenty, no underground irrigation systems are allowed to connect to the town water distribution system or in any manner use municipal water in accordance with the policy from the board, from the Select Board, October eighth, twenty twenty-four. Fourteen, and amended on, then twenty-sixth, twenty fifteen. Twenty-one, any underground storage system for use for irrigation must be shown on the plan prior to endorsement. Any change later in the project requires board approval. Twenty-two, the applicant shall allow members and town officials of the planning board and other persons acting under the authority of the planning board as its agents to enter upon any plans and carry out such surveys and inspections as may be deemed necessary and place and maintain monuments and marks. The applicant shall cooperate with the planning board and town officials and assist them in their efforts to verify the layout, design, and construction work in the site plan review plan are satisfactory and conform to the town specifications and the requirements of the planning board. Twenty-three, independent inspectors contracted or employed through the town shall perform the required construction inspections according to section nine point O of subdivision regulations as otherwise defined herein. The cost of these inspections shall be paid by the applicant. Noise dust and air quality control shall be in accordance with the regulations. Twenty-four, construction of the proposed driveways, parking areas, proposed drainage system, proposed water system, and proposed sewer system shall be supervised by a registered professional engineer. Said supervising and initial certify in writing to the planning board and DPW at completion that the proposed driveways, parking areas, drainage system, water system, and sewer system were constructed in accordance with the approved plans, and said systems are functioning in full accordance with the approved design. The certification of the proposed driveways, parking areas, and utilities shall be accompanied by as-built plans signed and stamped by a professional landscaper, and supervised by a registered professional engineer. and is supervised by a registered professional engineer.
You don't need to be impressed.
Thank you. Twenty-five, all materials for utility construction shall meet DPW construction standards. Twenty-six, a street opening permit shall be obtained for each individual utility connection with the fee and bond required with the permanent application. Twenty-seven, excavable, malleable fill shall be required for any excavation in Countryway, gas-water connections, and around any drainage structures placed in the Countryway right-of-way. Twenty-eight, a curb cut permit shall be obtained by the DPW prior to reconstruction conference. Twenty-nine, ADA compliant ramps shall be constructed at Countryway, at the proposed driveway. Said ramps shall meet town standards and shall be in compliance with the site plans. Flush ramp curbs shall be used in the bottom of the ramps where they meet with the tuminous concrete pavement. Thirty, the applicant shall obtain all necessary approvals for the use of town water prior to scheduling of the pre-conference, pre-construction conference, and any construction commencing. Installation of all water mains and appliances shall be performed according to the specification of the DPW Water Division. Thirty-one, a determination of adequacy of existing water services by a quote for the proposed use shall be provided by the applicant to the DPW and Town Planner for their approval prior to scheduling the pre-construction conference. Thirty-two, a dry sewer connection pipe shall be installed onsite in event sewer is available in the future. All sewer line construction must meet DPW standards and holds every relation. Thirty-three, the buildings, parking, walkways, and required signage shall meet all applicable requirements of the ADA, M A V, and the City Commission on Disabilities and Footyball. Thirty-four, the applicant shall ensure that signs, landscaping, and other features located within the site front end with areas of the project site, driveways, and intersection of Countryway are designed and installed and maintained so as not to impede lines of sight, not to exceed two point five feet in height. Thirty-five, all signs and pavement markings shall be installed. Show, to be installed shall conform to the applicable specifications of the manual on uniform traffic control devices. The access crosswalk shall be painted with ferroplastic paint. Thirty-six, the applicant shall ensure that snow windows located within the site triangle areas of the project site driveway intersection with Countryway that should feed two point five feet in height or that would be otherwise through the tight lines are promptly removed. Thirty-seven, a snow storage area has been designed onsite. De-icing and sanding agents can only be stored onsite if they are covered or contained. Thirty-eight, trash management will be handled with the residents responsible for bringing their trash to the one dumpster location which will have a concrete dust pad and best enclosure enclosure, at least on a weekly basis, to be removed. Thirty-nine, all electrical telephone cable and similar utility shall be located underground. Forty, except for the town-owned segments of sewer and water line from the property line outward, all utilities, including but not limited to the stormwater drainage, shall be maintained by the applicant according to the operations and maintenance plan proposed drainage system post-construction dated 27/25 by Brady Consulting LLC. Forty-one, if the drainage system is not performing as designed and conditioned or stormwater is observed going to a budding property or to the street, the stormwater authority can require all necessary mitigation to permanently remedy the situation. Forty-two, no separate stormwater permit is required as long as the site is built according to the approved plans and stormwater calculations. Forty-three, inspection of all infiltration systems must be performed by the planning board's consulting engineer and design engineer prior to any backfill or system component installation to conform to suitabilities of soils. Plans should be reviewed prior to endorsement to include the catch basin tributary to system S I F two to provide point two feet of free void before flowing into Countryway. Forty-four, soil conditions at the bottom of the proposed infiltration area shall be inspected by the town's consulting engineer prior to infiltration devices being installed and backfilled. Forty-five, the project is proposing discharge of stormwater that will convey runoff into the existing stormwater system in Countryway in front of building two, eight oh one, prior to stormwater entering the municipal system. Oil grid separators are located upstream to prevent the flows entering the underground storm system. Any and all work performed within Countryway shall have a one-year warranty on settlement and pavement restoration. Forty-six, all work located in the public way shall be coordinated with the DPW forty-eight hours before the work is performed. Affordability, all affordable units shall meet requirements for inclusion in the subsidized housing inventory through the state's LIP or other similar state-approved program in effect at the time of application. Forty-eight, according to Section 754 of the zoning bylaw, for projects receiving site plan review, not less than ten percent of housing units constructed shall be affordable. One affordable unit is required for a ten-unit project. Forty-nine, the affordable units shall be constructed simultaneously with the market-grade units. Fifty, the applicant shall be removed. Sorry, no certification of occupancy will be issued for any residential dwelling without the affordable units ready for occupancy. Fifty, the applicant shall be responsible for the preparation of a LIP local action units application to be submitted to the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities by the municipality chief elected official. Assistance will be available from the planning office. Erosion, erosion control and phasing. Fifty-one, an erosion control plan with a sequence of construction has been provided. The project requires a SWIP and the project should not commence prior to review and approval of the SWIP by the town prior to filing with the EPA at least two weeks of use challenge required. Fifty-two, stockhouses shall be located as shown on the plans and must be protected with erosion controls included but not limited to silt socks and temporary receiving. Fifty-three, there shall be full unimpeded access for the fire truck and ambulance during construction. Fifty-four, the construction phase, operation, and manual maintenance plan, best management practices shall be adhered to and added to the plans prior to use. Environmental conditions, noise and dust. Fifty-five, site noise levels shall conform to NASTA EP's Division of Air Quality Controls Noise Policy. Fifty-six, the applicant shall follow all regulations under the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, air pollution control, et cetera, et cetera. Fifty-seven, the applicant shall not operate any concrete crushing machinery on a project site. Fifty-eight, dust control plan must be provided to the planning board for review and approval prior to the reconstruction conference. Landscaping and site amenities and public realm improvements. Fifty-nine, all changes to the proposed plans must be presented to the Town Planner for approval. And this includes lighting, signage, painting materials, fencing, or landscaping. Sixty, a separate sign permit shall be required for building requirement for any freestanding signs unless otherwise exempted under the zoning bylaws. Any sign must be reviewed by the design committee prior to permit. Sixty-one, all proposed lawns and square areas shall have a minimum of six inches of clean screed, screed load. Billings shall be provided to the Town Planner during construction to show that the load is clean. Sixty-two, there shall be no lighting spillage, spillover to any embudding properties. Lighting fixtures, details and specifications shall be provided on the plans prior to endorsement. Sixty-three, all walls over four feet high must be designed by a structural engineer and need building code.
The second sentence catch.
Excuse me?
The second sentence is being crossed out.
So. Anyway, building code on it. Sixty-four, street trees shall be a minimum of three inches caliber and ten feet high with branching height above sixteen. Sixty-five, the existing roofs stripped from the project shall not be spread back on the site if it contains invasive species, i.e. not leaves. Sixty-six, two six additional evergreen shrubs, three to four feet in height, shall be provided if headlight flare proves to be an issue coming up the driveway at the south end of the site. Sixty-seven, the applicant shall construct a sidewalk in the town right-of-way, a countryway, to town standards. The walkway shall extend along the entire frontage of the property except where there are driveways and should be five point five feet wide. ADA compliant concrete sidewalk with vertical ramp curving. Sixty-eight, the applicant has agreed to install additional sidewalk along the frontage of 793 Countryway to the Lincoln Park driveway. The applicant is responsible for installation of the five-point five ADA compliant concrete sidewalk. The town has agreed to remove the tree on the 793 Countryway property as the roots will interfere with the sidewalk. We're almost there. The owner of 793 Countryway will remove the existing sign prior to construction. Design of the sidewalk in front of 793 Countryway will be provided by itself to the town. Architectural design. Sixty-nine, the building shall be constructed in accordance with the architectural elevation and plans submitted for the project. Seventy, fine and filigree plants stamped by registered architect shall be provided to the planning board prior to a building permit being issued for review of consistency with elevations and renderings described in condition. Seventy-one, long reflective glass is required for building signs that face the street of your way. Seventy-two, any privacy plenty on site is required to be secured. Seventy-three, calculation from garden capacity, downspout sizing, interior roof drains, and pipe sizing shall be submitted and approved by the consulting engineer prior to issuing some building permit. Seventy-four, our certificate, certification shall be provided to the Town Planner by the architect prior to obtaining a certificate of occupancy that the buildings as constructed are in substantial compliance with the approved plans. Required prior to scheduling of pre-conference, reconstruction conference. Seventy-five, as the units are condominium units, condominium trust and master deed shall provide for review to include.
Yeah, I believe that.
What else?
Because I have a problem with the name.
Yeah, the usual, whatever. Seventy-six, prior to scheduling the pre-construction conference, the applicant shall provide the planning board the necessary bits and pieces that you need to provide. Okay. The EPA SWIP shall be provided to the town for review and approval prior to submission to EPA. Required prior to starting construction. Seventy-seven, in two calendar weeks prior to the applicant's notification to the Town Planner that it intends to commence any work on the project, a pre-construction conference shall be held with the usual suspects. A list of all contract, not all contractor contacts, including names and telephone numbers shall be provided to the planning board, DPW, at least department. At least one telephone contact shall be available twenty-four hours per day in the event of emergency. Seventy-eight, the property lines of the subject property shall be marked upland in the field under the direction of a licensed surveyor or surveyor and notification given to the Town Planner and consulting engineer minimum of three business days prior to the start of construction. Seventy-nine, stabilized construction entrance and silt fence slash saw must be installed prior to any earth disturbing activities onsite. Construction fencing shall be required as necessary to comply with federal, state, and local laws. Eight, the utility access easements must be reported prior to construction. Required during construction. Eighty-one, construction shall not begin prior to seven AM weekdays and eight AM on Saturday and shall cease related at seven PM or dusk whichever is earlier. No construction shall take place on Sundays on legal, state, or federal holidays. Eighty-two, the board reserves the right to require the consulting engineer to visit the site equally or as often as necessary during construction to observe and report on matters with the scope of plan authority. Eighty-three, all earth-moving disturbance operations shall occur, shall only occur while erosion and sedimentation control measures are in place and approved by the Town Planner or the town's consulting engineer. Eighty-four, construction activities on the site shall conform to the Town and City General bylaws. Eighty-five, no sediment, cleaning, silt, or water shall be allowed to leave the site during construction. Eighty-six, no parking or unloading of Countryway shall be permitted during construction unless approved in advance. Construction vehicles shall use designated construction access on site. Eighty-seven, all construction parking shall be onsite unless otherwise approved by the board. Eighty-eight, applicant shall notify the city police department forty-eight hours in advance of any significant equipment and construction material arriving to the site which may cause a safety hazard or material disruption of the public way such that at least detail is necessary and is at the expense of the apartment and is required when the police department determines it is necessary. Eighty-nine, the applicant shall not allow any large construction equipment on trucks to stage or idle on public roads and shall not allow such equipment on trucks to idle onsite prior to seven AM on weekdays or eight AM on Saturday. Eighty-nine, the applicant shall provide the town with the routes construction traffic will use to reach the project site. Ninety-one, construction activities shall be conducted in a working-like manner at all times. Ninety-two, no use of wagons onsite or on adjacent roads offsite is allowed construction use. Wagon may be available at the water treatment plant for construction use during non-watering times. Ninety-three, in an amount to reduce noise level, we applicant shall be all equipped with that emanates sound from structure on a site with proper work being ordered through regular means. Non-bleaching if necessary shall be conducted according to all necessary permits and meet all requirements of the city by the department. Ninety-three, snow cannot be stored on sub-surface stormwater or leaching areas. This condition survives in perpetuity. Ninety-six, no de-watering water shall leave the site and shall remain totally on site. Required prior to issuance of occupancy permits. Ninety-seven, no certificate of occupancy shall be issued until the planning board and building commissioner are satisfied. Second. Ninety-eight, prior to application for a certificate of occupancy, a copy of the contract for inspections and maintenance of stormwater system per the operation and maintenance plan shall be provided to the planning office. Ninety-nine, the applicant has provided the planning board condominium trust documents including the master deed and a declaration of trust. One hundred, prior to applying for an occupancy. These documents shall be.
Master deed shall be like.
But once filled, bedrooms cannot be reconfigured to gain additional bedrooms. And it must, and the master deed and condominium declaration of trust must be recorded prior to any occupancy permit being issued. One hundred, prior to applying for an occupancy permit, it shall provide a, a copy of an executed regulatory agreement between the developer, municipality, and the E O H L C to ensure long-term affordability, b, the proposed price of the affordable units, c, a draft deed restriction to restrict the subsequent price of the affordable ownership units to the applicable ownership amounts for units at or below eighty percent of the AMI according to E O H L C in perpetuity. The draft deed restriction shall be approved by the town, by Town Council and proof of recording provided to the planning board prior to the issuance of occupancy for the affordable unit. B, a plan showing the location of the affordable unit for the building and planning department.
See, you said typical affordable departments.
Da-da-da-da-da-da, administration. One-on-one, all town hearings referenced. One-on-one, all time here is referenced in this document. The completion of conditions shall be told in case any appeals that they have. To the site plan review and stormwater permit shall run with the land and shall be void if it is not recorded with the registry of deeds within one hundred twenty days of expiration of the appeal period or such extension of that time period granted by the planning board following a performance permit. The applicant shall provide proof that it has been reported. One oh three, the planning board may at its discretion with notification to the owner waive or modify the conditions of this site plan and a duly qualification of the board if the board determines that such waiver or modification is insignificant and does not materially adversely affect the purpose of this decision or is otherwise warranted. One oh four, this site plan review and stormwater permit shall last within two years from the date of its issuance unless substantial use or construction has commenced. One oh five, all sheets of the plans, site plan review and stormwater permit shall be recorded at the registry of deeds. One oh six, all construction work shall be done in accordance with plans. Failure to comply with any conditions whose permit shall cause it to be deemed invalid. One oh seven, any condition of the day and hearing that varies from the plan supersedes the plan we have. A.
That can be pretty scary.
Yes, I have a question on page seventeen please. I've seen this before. Any underground storage. It was a variation.
Yeah, that, why was twenty-one in there? Any underground storage to be used for irrigate, irrigation?
It must be shown on the plan prior to.
So Mr. McGill did that on fourteen to sixteen, Old Country Way.
Oh.
So I put it in as a condition, it was a condition of eight oh three.
Because we, we put in Sistern to use our drain, our roof drain function to irrigate.
Got it, alright, fine.
I'm just saying you gotta show it on the plan because it potentially could affect some of the drainage, et cetera.
Right.
Okay.
So now we have it.
It was in eight oh three.
I'm setting precedent.
You go. I just have a couple things. I didn't know the thirty-two. Just got my word, word. There's drive sewer connection by public spall on site. And I would say the support connection to town sewer, give that, the sewer is a good fusion.
Is that? Are you saying it's mandatory to connect up if the sewer becomes available? Or can we continue to use our septic system?
It's that, it depends on what the determination is at that time, right? The town makes that determination.
Well, I would think that if.
I were, we're not gonna legislate it here. They come in and say, we're doing the new sewer connection and you have to connect, yeah.
Get mandated sometimes in the. Really?
Yeah.
Is that, it needs a certain amount of flow for it to work correctly, right?
So they, they, we don't get to say that.
Um, forty-one. The drainage system is not performing as it's designed. Um, whether during construction or post-construction. Just want to get in the notion that you don't wait to, you know, occupancy before you deal with drainage problems. Anything else?
That was, that condition came from bottom clay.
Sorry?
That condition originally came from bottom clay. Yeah, yeah, he was, he wanted a catch-all.
Um, I'm forty-five, just the way that you're. Um. I think this, is, is this a? The way I understood it, this was sort of a vestige of the existing property already draining there, right? As opposed to kind of, you know, you can petition to do that. So I, I just don't want that to be considered a precedent, right? So I'm suggesting maybe this is rewritten. The project, you know, the project property already drains to the existing stormwater system. And the project is proposing to continue that connection and discharge to the stormwater system. Now fifty-nine, all changes to the proposed plan must be presented down for doable prior to commencement of work on septic. On, we just didn't understand, so on sixty-eight. On the next page. It starts seven ninety-three C W S L L C.
That's the owner of, um, that's the owner of seven ninety-three countryway.
Okay, so is that Mike White?
Yeah.
We need his name or just Steve did that?
I could, I could take him out, I mean, I.
I would, I would just put D.
Alright.
Cause, you know, this could be transferred to somebody else, so.
Okay. I mean, I haven't got, I don't have, I keep asking for stuff about indemnification. I don't get anything on the indemnification. But, you know, we have to have indemnification prior to the treaty coming out. Town council is supposed to get this.
That's it. Little written, white and black.
Alright, second is amended.
Okay.
Aye.
It's done.
Good.
What?
Can I, can I have a question about something?
Okay, go on.
Sorry, on seventy-six D.
Yes.
Cerdy bond. Um.
We want your firstborn.
Yeah, well, that's, and so, so what I'm proposing.
I left her cash.
What I'm proposing is so for the cerdy bond, you know, there's obviously a huge difference to the entire site amount, which, um, is, you know, upwards of seven hundred, eight hundred thousand dollars versus all the public way stuff. So what I, what I would like to do is give you a cerdy bond for the hundred, a hundred and twenty, or whatever amount we provide and then, um, you know, the town engineer agrees that that's the amount for, you know, sidewalk curbing and everything to do in the public way. Um, it doesn't make sense to request the amount for the entire site.
It's not requesting for the entire site. It's only requesting for landscaping, parking utilities, drainage signs and lighting. It's not requesting, it's, they're not asking for any charity for the buildings and everything. It's only, it's only a set of stuff.
So no septic, no septic, let me still thinking, but I mean, if you're, you're not looking for, you're still looking for a significant amount of money for something on site. The, the point is, the town since sixteen thirty-six, has a town ever taken over a failed private project and gotten there to do, to finish the project themselves? I can't imagine you've ever cashed down a cerdy.
This is, this is crazy.
Point, I know it's.
We have cashed in on a charity for a subdivision. A subdivision is different from a site that we have, we absolutely, when the developer went bankrupt, we called the charity and had to, and had to finish the work.
But that's a subdivision for roads and public, public right of ways, which would be the sidewalk. The site itself, I mean, if I don't, if I don't pave it, I'm not gonna get a certificate of occupancy. If I don't do certain things. But if I run off to Europe with Taylor Swift and you guys have to come in and, 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 and take it over, I understand.
I'd be crazy.
But, but using the cerdy bond to finish the public right of way, the sidewalk, the curbing, all that, I understand. But all the rest, any money that's put on.
I think the site drainage would have to be probably done, right? We can't have a torn up site with drainage in all different places.
Right, but it's.
That would have to be done.
But it's private property, you wouldn't be able to do. You're not legally allowed to go onto a private piece of property because if I don't own it, the bank, you're not legally allowed, the town is not legally allowed to go on a piece of property and, and do the work themselves. They could, that's why I'm saying the public right of way, the sidewalk and all that stuff, public thing. You, you.
No, I mean, we, we do subdivisions that are not public roads. Those are not necessarily public roads, right?
I disagree with you. I, I don't think you'd be allowed to go on a, a private piece of property and cash in on a cerdy bond to do work on a private piece of property.
Just wouldn't be allowed.
You, you, a subdivision.
I wouldn't change this so much, town council said, we don't have any authority to do it.
I have not asked town council to ask you.
Alright, well, if, I mean, if it's not, if it's not a simple, you know, I don't want to.
I think it's not gonna cost as much as you think. Unless Kevin's already prepared the estimate.
Well, I have an estimate, I have an estimate for the entire site, but I haven't done, I haven't broken out and who's the septic and stuff, but.
And I don't think.
So I'll take out, pull out the septic. So just.
Conventions.
Yeah. Alright.
Pull out a bunch of this stuff. And if you can get that number down.
I think you can probably get the number down more than you think you can.
Okay. Alright, then I, then I have notes. And I have notes.
Was there any? Which isn't the entire thing, so it's not, gonna get that down.
Okay.
I'm gonna get this.
Here, I got yours there. I wanted to add these Googles to the mine.
Yeah.
Just so you can see it.
Yeah.
I saw on the, uh, operation main, it's probably that is.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Hold on, no. Sorry, I'll just.
That's okay.
Got it.
We'll catch up.
I'm gonna mercy.
Make sure everything's okay, um, okay. Alright, I'll make it, it's okay, okay. Drive stay. So if, if, Kevin, if you could hold those up, it's up. That would be, that would be fine. Getting teleported, so. He said, maybe give him your six waves, which I think is pretty good. So I, I think we're all set yet then.
Yep, would you tell the next one to do?
Well, yeah, we do the lot again.
Yeah.
Would you like to write here? It's short. Well, it's not like you're reading the Bible again or before or whatever else.
Okay. Hi, um, this is a request for drainage modification made by the county board during review in the city of Village eight oh three countryway. I would accept the applicant's request for drainage modification to the approved drainage system at eight oh three countryway consisting of the following changes shown on the site mandated eleven three twenty twenty-five as a minor modification. I read it off.
Well, you can just, I mean, it was described in the law.
Yeah.
Thought about the changes I needed to make the drainage system fully work. All conditions of October three twenty twenty-five site plan review and stormwater permit remain in effect. Need a second. Say second.
Oh, fair.
Aye.
I'm done.
Thank you.
Alright.
Alright.
So. So we'll see you next week prior to this. We get, we get to endorse eight oh three.
Okay, well, we, we'll be here next week, same last week, same, same decade, we'll be here.
We will be at the emergency operating center.
Yeah, we will be with a police station.
I'm going to police station.
Oh, okay.
We're not ready to say that.
Is the police and fire station, is that the same thing?
Yes, yes.
Nice move, that's a big idea.
Judge, we're, we're way too big for loving you, they'll give so much privacy. Because that's why, why should they ever get married?
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Am I gonna put a?
Although, you can break Peter's nose.
Wait, what was?
We need treats.
Under.
Okay, so.
So I'm gonna send a page.
Alright, I'll run to talk tomorrow morning. I'll run to talk tomorrow.
Okay. Thanks, Eric.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who's that? Real?
Well, you'll see in one so many.
I have, I have a coin. I'm gonna play that back in a little bit.
It says up to once.
Yeah, and, and you know what their, how construction was.
Yeah, you won't see him for months and then it's in.
Right, right, alright.
And you're out.
So I, I asked Roger to, because I wanna tell you more. Um, Kevin, back that conversation. About, um, any that we approved, in years of modification, we wanted to come down with this.
Okay.
Just because if we've approved it and they've decided to change something, why?
Right.
I mean, just so that you could kinda understand, we would keep calling that, that that's, I, I don't think that's unreal or.
I agree.
That we should be repeating that because of this company's no side wires, so I'm the boss.
Yeah, yeah, no.
Let's forgive this, nobody want permission. Alright then, so if we could ask, if you have a search deed, that's why.
Sure, no, no, that's, yeah, that's usually.
Okay, John always goes that way.
Yeah, I know, but I was.
I don't always give, I mean, I don't give, I'll have to look and see on the stormwater permits. If, if one's, if one is approved, it's a minor modification, I might not bring it back to the board. But on the, on a major, on a special permit, a major, major site thing, yeah, I'm gonna bring it to you. Or somebody gives us something and decides that, um, they wanna modify it to something bigger. Why, you're, we already approved something, why, what do you wanna do? That's what I'm wondering about. Because especially as I go down, uh, B and D and R, that's getting bigger and bigger and bigger and bigger down yet. You know.
Which one, oh, is that the one right near the light?
The three of them, yeah. It's getting bigger and bigger down yet, and we don't see those.
Yeah.
So we don't see those modifications, so.
Yeah, awesome. Um, are you all set, Ken?
Yeah, I'm all set, and thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Double thanks. I, I don't think it's worth talking about, so.
No, no, that's keep you.
Okay, um, so I think we're, that, everything on the agenda, right?
Yep, so I'll, I'll make a motion.
When we're done, Baba.
Remember, there's still a matter.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Did everyone sign the card? I don't remember. It's right there. Thanks, John.
Thank you, thank you.
Alright, so we're done. We're done, thank you, Seb.
Oh, you're all set, excellent, have a good night, everybody, take care.